Okay. That should be better? Yep, no reverberation.
So, we're going to resume our meeting. And the next item is commission business. Item A is a request for the modifications to the Decormier Woods OSS resubdivision and site plan to waive required street trees. This is a discussion. So, welcome. I guess you're part of a group. And we'd like to hear what you have to say, what you're requesting. Is there anyone who likes to speak for the group? All right, so just come up to the microphone because it's part of a public record. So, we can better understand.
I dressed too.
Yeah. Just, just as a prefatory matter, well, he signs in. This is Jennifer Coppola from Seal and Donofrio Corporation Council for the record. So, just, just sort of, just as a refresher, procedurally subdivision and resubdivision applications are automatic public hearings pursuant to state statute. What I think you're going to hear from the public is that they're looking for a modification of the approval that was given. And I think you do need to consider whether or not it needs to be a public hearing. Because, you know, we've had, we've had this issue before. Sometimes based upon what the request is, you've, you've found that the public hearing wasn't necessary. Sometimes you found the opposite. So, I think you need to take in some general information because I'm not entirely certain. I have reviewed everything that has been submitted. I do have some additional comments. But I do think you need to hear from the requestor or the requestors. I'm not sure how many people are involved. I, I have a concern about whether or not all of the lot owners are aware. Because I, obviously, I have no sense of whether or not all the email, because I noticed that a number of people were copied, whether or not that constituted, you know, a complete list of all property owners so that all folks were aware about this opportunity to come and address you. And I did note that your clerk, Ms. Castellani, the administrative clerk for the department, that she did include in the email that she sent out to folks just advising of the fact that, you know, there was this opportunity to attend this meeting tonight. She did indicate that to the extent that anybody was going to have anybody else speak on their behalf, that they should submit something in writing. Because of course, you know, we can't just take a representation. That's not what we do in the usual course of the business of this commission. You know, we have people submit something in writing, you know, if they're going to have somebody else represent them at the meeting. So, and I don't believe that there were actually many emails received.
There were four, at least four, and we have another five houses.
Excuse me, you'll have a chance. I just wanted to let the attorney finish her thought. Hold on to that.
Thank you, sir. So, I think we need to just check with staff about whether or not anything else came in because I know sometimes people come to the counter or whatever. But yeah, there, there, I only saw, I think, two additional other than, I'm assuming that you're Mr. Golia. So, I only saw two additional. So, I think there is that concern too.
Okay.
You know, because you don't want to have a situation, I think, where you make a decision and then, you know, next week, somebody else is coming in. So, I, I, I think maybe we need to give some thought to that as well.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. All right, I'm going to turn my attention to you, Mr. Gould.
Goldia.
Goldie. Okay, thank you.
Also, I had, was asked to send ahead of this meeting a position statement. So, I just want to confirm it was received, but everybody reviewed it. I didn't want to repeat all of that, so I just have some talking points. But I just want to confirm that that was received.
That was distributed.
Perfect.
The one that starts with community impact.
Yeah.
Sir, could you just make sure that your microphone is highlighted? Because you seem somewhat soft spoken to me. I think it's because your voice is.
Oh, it's, it's a difficult.
Into that one too.
Test.
Yes, okay. All righty, yay.
Perfect. No worries.
Yeah, we're working on it, so.
Well, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge something that we all share across Brittany's path and Hawks Landing. We're deeply invested in the community as homeowners, as parents, professionals, and neighbors, some business owners in town. All of us work hard, care for our families, and take pride in the neighborhoods we've chosen to call home. Last week and a half has been disruptive for everyone, not just for us as residents, but for town staff and representatives as well. It added extra work to our plates, pulled us away from our families, and forced us to navigate a process that feels more reactive than collaborative. In 2022, my wife and I returned to Connecticut with our two boys after a decade away relocating during the pandemic, eventually finding a home in Berlin. We bought the house sight unseen, guided by FaceTime tours with my mom through town and trusted through our real estate agent. And, but when we drove up Brittany's path for the first time, we knew it was home. What we found was a community built on beauty, stewardship, and autonomy. Homeowners invested in their properties far beyond what the builders provided. But as time passed, we began to notice gaps, not in neighborhood care, but in the systems meant to support it. We were all told an HOA would eventually form. We received covenants at closing, but there was no roadmaps, no timeline, and no clarity about subdivision obligations or how decisions like tree placement would be made. Take my lot, for instance, I have about 50 feet of street frontage, much of it occupied by utilities, yet somehow I went from one tree to two trees. And it wasn't clear how that decision process was made other than a third party came out and surveyed the land, decided the trees were going to go based on some sort of spacing. We reviewed site plans, approval letters, and, and the planting maps that we eventually were given. The document, documentation's inconsistent, the process lacks transparency, and the homeowners are left confused and unprepared. And this isn't just about trees. I was president of the Environmental Club in my college, so I feel pretty good about my love of nature, the amount of time I spend in all the open space in Berlin. But to me, it's about governance and how the subdivisions are completed, how things like HOAs are formed or not, and, and how residents are informed and included in that process. So, tonight, we respectfully asked the town to consider granting the request, the requested waiver to remove the assigned trees from the lots and allow alternate planting in open space, but also conducting a postmortem review of Brittany's path and Hawks Landing, the process, establishing clear protocols for developer transitions and HOA formation, requiring real estate disclosures that include subdivision status and HOA expectations, notifying homeowners of things like proposed tree plantings before they're planted, and updating subdivision regulations to reflect real world lot conditions, which we're not taking into consideration when the tree planting was done. So, we're not resisting beautification. In fact, we invite you to come into our neighborhood to see the investments we've already made. More than 70 trees have been planted by residents, including over 40 green giants right next to my property across the street. And the developer preserved acres of open space, and each of us has mature trees that frame our backyard. So, the beauty is here, there's no question about it. The stewardship is real. What we're asking for is alignment between intent and execution and between vision and reality. Berlin showed us promise from afar, but now we ask that its planning processes reflect that same promise of clarity, care, and community. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Cory. Oh, oh, okay. So, he's the landscaping contractor. He's a project contractor, general contractor. So, Mr. Juasty, just, your town planner, just noted that is, is his last name is McCarty?
McLardy. Steve McLardy, who's the contractor, who's the, the general contractor working on the road and some of the other on public improvements, is also attending the meeting.
So, so again, just to go back, Mr. Golia, could you just go back to the microphone for one quick sec? Before they move on to anybody else who'd like to speak. So, your request is for no street trees to be installed? Except, you said alongside the open space? That's, that was one of my questions that I.
Yeah, we're in a predicament. Okay, I'm sorry if you. Because when we found out about this, we found out because utility workers came out and started marking our wants. And at that point, the process was already moved forward unbeknownst to us. The trees are in. We're, we're, we're past that point. So, we're asking, I mean, we'd like them removed, we'd like them put in open space. That was a request from the beginning was just a pause. We understand that there was potentially cost to that, but we were never considered in this process. And we've been living there for a long time. It's not as if this was developments brand new. We've been there for a short period of time. We've been asking for things like the road to, to be paved. When we did ask for the road to be paved and pushing for that to be done, we were told that pinning had to happen. We were told that certain final details had to. Everybody told us 100 things that had to happen with the road being paved. Nobody ever once mentioned trees being planted. So, it was just confusing matter that we're now stuck in because the trees are in the ground. So, I, I, I don't know what the request is at this point, but we, we don't, we didn't want the tree. We, we love trees, we love the trees planted in our open spaces. We just didn't want them in our front yards, at least without consultation. So, I, I don't know where we stand because of that, because they're already in the ground. But yeah, the request is not to have them.
So, yes, no, so, yeah. So, I, I think you need to hear from anybody else who's here who would like to speak in this regard. And then, I, I know you do have, staff does have some written submissions. I think those should probably be read into the record too. Just again, so you're focused on this issue of, you know, is, is this request the same across from everybody who is concerned about this issue? And you have a sense, again, how many lot owners are we talking about? Within the back of your mind, you got to figure out, do you think you need to go to public hearing? So, you're giving an opportunity of, of all of them? I, I just, I am concerned about that issue. Because I don't, I don't want you to make a decision and then, you know, next week or the week after, somebody else is coming in and wanting a different relief. You know, then you're going to potentially feel compelled to give them, you know, an opportunity again and, and just, this is, this could really continue on. So, yeah, so I think you need, you need to hear from everybody else who's here about what their thoughts are. And Mrs. Juasty can, can maybe read in the record, or I can read into the record, the written correspondence that was received.
Some of the correspondence is pages long because it's added to other correspondence. So, it'll take a minute to find, like, the, the, I agree with Mr. Golia. You know, there's, we had several that said, I agree with Mr. Golia, and then expanded, or they might have asked questions, and we went back and forth. So, I'll just try to find those. I do think I got one who said they liked the trees, or whether that was a voicemail or a message, I wasn't immediately able to find that before the beginning of the meeting.
Well, we can hear from the rest of the neighbors here because obviously you've all made the trip out.
I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but if you don't mind allowing staff to give a little bit of an overview of subdivision review. So, in 20, you know, the fact that these trees were part of the subdivision review, it's part of the subdivision regulations. The subdivision review happened in 2018, and it's an ongoing. Should be on.
Mm-hmm.
On, but.
That's a little closer.
Yeah, I'm just, got no voice at this point in my life, sorry. But the, the decision letter as well as the subdivision plan set, I did find, recorded on the land records, you know, I verified that that's recorded on the land record along with the letter of approval. So, all those documents are found during due diligence of, of purchase, and it is, you know, an ongoing subdivision that's not completed yet, isn't completed until the developer asks for road acceptance. That's part of the process, that's the way the process works, that's the way subdivisions go through the process. So, asking individual homeowners, I just want the clarity of, of it's, street trees are not subject to the individual homeowner's input, generally speaking. There's something that comes along with the developer proposing the subdivision. In this particular instance, the letter of approval indicated, and, and going back to the minutes, and I included those in your packages from 2018, the fact that the lots, and, well, may or may not remember what the property was like, but it's a pretty reasonably forested property, open, you know, natural environment, hadn't been a field or something. It had a lot of mature trees. And so, the commission wrote into that decision that the, the developer or, and/or the builders of the lots could request forgiveness of the street trees if they preserved trees that would be along the roadway, in lieu of mature trees that were already there. For the most part, as those lots were developed, some by the developer, others were sold off to be built by individuals and/or their builders, whether builders owned them first or they went straight to homeowners. I'm, I didn't do that search. But we were generally not asked, that I can recall, asked to keep trees. You know, hey, we're keeping these trees, so can you forgive our street trees? Mr., there, there was the lots along Hawks Landing where those trees, they did come to town, to town staff, and it was after, actually, they planted trees along the right-of-way and actually in the right-of-way. And so, the town said, you've got to move your trees out of the right-of-way and onto your property. And they did hedges along Hawks Landing, one side of Hawks Landing. And, but he, you know, in communication with the town with regard to that. So, when the developer came in asking, or the developer's representative came in asking about where they would not be required to have trees, we did say that, that was not necessary, although they did end up planted there. Street trees did end up planted behind the hedge row that was put up. And we forgave the trees along the open space on the west side of the, of Brittany's path because that is remaining substantially forested. It's the open space parcel. So, that, but the individual lots that aren't built, you'd have to have street trees put in front of those because they'll be lots, they'll be, they could be developed as building lots. They're not right now, they're still forested, but it could be built.
Yeah.
So, this is just kind of a background as to the requirement. The requirement stems from the subdivision regulations and the subdivision approval, all recorded on the land.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for your patience.
Yes, my name's Anne Pino. I'm a resident of Brittany's path. There are 11 homes completed in that neighborhood. As you may all be aware, the original developer, Ray Decormier, passed away. And control of this was left to his wife. We've all lived there somewhere between two and four years. There's been no communication with his wife until this point in time. The homes were built by four different builders, at least at this point. And we had no knowledge of the requirement for street trees until our lots were being measured. As you can appreciate, I'm, I'm assuming you're all homeowners in town. We've all invested a great deal of money in landscaping our lots, in getting the grass to grow. So, this was a complete surprise when people show up and start digging and planting large trees, not ornamental trees. Our subdivision HOA rules say you cannot plant a tree that will grow to greater than 30 feet close to our homes. We thought that applied to our entire property. So, what we had asked originally when Matt Golia filed the request was to put a pause on the planting until we could present our case to the town because we had no communication about it. We were granted the right to come and present our case, but not pause the planting. So, that's why it seems to be a fait accompli at this point. But it's very concerning. On Tuesday, after the trees in my own yard had been planted, the company that does the utility placement and markings came again and marked our lawn again and commented to my husband, these trees are too close to the utilities, they should never have been planted here. That says to me a lack of foresight and a lack of oversight. Because someday, those roots are going to eat into our utilities and be a problem for the neighborhood and the town. So, it's been a very upsetting process to all of us and has created a great deal of ill will, and I don't want to have ill will towards my town and towards my community. You know, we were thrilled to have a beautiful home, but we were not given any grace or consideration. And there doesn't seem to be a process in place when the original developer passes away. And we're left up in the air. And I've tried to contact, we have contacted the developer's attorney to try to get a better understanding of the HOA and what our rights are and what we need to do. And we met once, and all of our phone calls have not been returned. So, we're really left hanging with our yards torn up. Yes, there are trees, but what our intent was not no trees. Our intent was let us help place them elsewhere in our community. Because naturally, when you're building homes and you're leaving trees on lots, you don't leave them in a line along the utility line. They're between homes. They don't necessarily, at this point, go with the aesthetic that we've tried to achieve with our homes. This rule was put into place in 1949, before underground utilities and irrigation systems and all of this. I think it really needs to be looked at by the town. It has been looked at through the years, but I think things have changed, the aesthetic has changed, and we all just wanted to be able to have some say in the aesthetic of our homes that we all take pride in. And everybody just forged ahead. So, that's really what we wanted to present to the committee. There's other issues about understanding what happens with the street now, how it gets turned over to the town, who's responsible for that? This developer who never interacted with us to begin with? I understand that Mr. McLardy's been overseeing a lot of this, but I don't even know who he is. So, there's nobody to converse with. So, that's where we stand if other neighbors want to speak. I, I think they should while they, while we have the opportunity.
Okay.
Madam Chair, excuse?
Yes.
Before we let Ms. Pino go, could you tell me who you contacted? You indicated you contacted an attorney on behalf of the developer?
Richard Pentore, who was the attorney for Ray Decormier and the, and the development, I believe.
So, just for the record, I think you were handed out, because I did do research when the response was received last night from Mr. Golia, and he raised the HOA issue. I took a look at both the land records and, and listen, the filing of the actual subdivision plan set, it, it does indicate that it was filed on behalf of the association. The association, you'll, you'll see, you have the Secretary of Estates print out, you'll see that the homeowners association, it's Decormier Woods Homeowners Association, Inc., was incorporated. So, there's this, you know, there's a certificate of incorporation, there's an organization and a first annual report, and then annual reports have been filed every year, including this year, by Attorney Pentore. So, I did attempt to reach out to him to find out what the status is with the homeowners association, given the representations that were made in Mr. Golia's statement that he last submitted. And, you know, from looking at it, it appears that the homeowners association was created, but you're receiving different.
No, he.
Input here.
He did advise that the homeowners association was created, but that Fran Decormier, the widow of the original developer, is in charge of it. And we've had no communication from her in the years that we've lived in the neighborhood. And eventually, he said it would be turned over to us. But he recommended, quite honestly, that we try to figure out a way not to have a homeowners association and see if the town's land trust was interested in the open space or the town was interested in the open space. And that's how he left us. He has not returned any phone calls or gotten back to us. So, we don't know where we stand.
Okay, so that, that issue isn't really the, you know, the issue that, that's before you tonight, but I, you know, we'll, we'll do some further investigating into that and hopefully get some input from, from what's going on in that regard. Yeah, I, I mean, I think you know this. I mean, you're, you're not, the, the town does get involved in, in that piece of it to the extent that there, you know, there is a covenant, you know, the representation is made through, obviously, the submission, things get approved with homeowners association being created. You know, sometimes there are issues with that over time typically, not, not typically at the inception, but sometimes, you know, down the road when, when the properties are, are fully developed, you know, and when everything is done, you know, a period of time will pass. And sometimes I know just from my work in other towns, towns will, will get approached, you know, that they want to dissolve the homeowners association because there's nothing left additional to do or whatever. So, I, you know, we, we, we'll look into it, even though, you know, really, it isn't your issue. You know, I looked at, you know, some of the deeds and, and, you know, in one of the declarations, it does indicate, and I think there's been an acknowledgement of this, that, you know, the folks that have purchased lots, that they would become a member of a homeowners association, but it sounds like there needs to be some better communication. So, you know, we'll try to facilitate that as best as we can. Yeah, and considering what to do about the open space, we've had this discussion about, you know, we, we have had some conservation easement areas that have been of concern. But, you know, that, that, the comment that was last made about turning over the open space to the town potentially, I will discuss that with Attorney Pentore.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Rivera. I guess I'm going to represent Hawks Landing. I'm at 11 Hawks Landing. I'll take a different approach now that the trees are in, is that four years ago when we bought the property and then paid a ton of money to clear the property, we bought the highest, the highest property, the highest elevation property for the view of the Connecticut River Valley, which will now 100% be ruined because there was no communication with us to even talk about putting in ornamental trees that might grow to 20 feet tall and not ruin all of our views of the Connecticut River Valley. You guys put pin oak trees in that are going to get to 70 feet. We have them in our woods, they still have leaves on them. They put maple trees in to get to 50. They put maple trees in to get to fifty feet, and they're going to get huge canopies. And I mean, it'd be nice to, if we're going to put trees in, maybe come up with an agreement on a certain size tree because we all have covenances. Without an HOA, that state, we can't have trees over forty feet. You can't have fences or natural, you can't put a fence within ten feet of the property line. You have to have a natural border. And we've used these covenances against each other to make sure that we all follow the rules. Yet the town will come in and just say, or the developer, we're going to put seventy-foot trees in your front yard. And we're going to put fifty-foot trees in your front yard. We're going to put them every thirty-five feet. And in five years, none of us are going to have a view. And we all spent a ton of money to be up there for the view. So it's kind of my issue with it. Because I put a forty-four foot, forty-four foot front porch in my house and built my house on the angle so that we can see from the bedrooms, the Connecticut River Valley, that now that Lot Two has plantings up and around the corner, I will not see in five years, which kind of defeats the purpose of spending the amount of money that I did up there. And I put eighteen trees on my property since I moved in. So I'll leave it at that, I guess.
And is there anyone else? No, not, nothing at this point. Okay.
Was a member of the public that did send in an email this afternoon that I see in my email at four fifty-four PM. Carolyn Manchester from one twenty-five Brittany's Path. She indicates, we also are homeowners on Brittany's Path. We agree with Matthew Golia's statement regarding the planting of trees in De Cormier Woods. We plan on attending the meeting tonight. Thank you, Carolyn and Brian Manchester. I don't, I don't know if she's present. So I guess she's, again, just putting that into the record. I don't know, Maureen, are there any others that you wanted to just know?
Mr. Data speak? Arson Data? Okay. So he also, they also had correspondence with me, including that they were concerned with the existing trees. I think that might have been copied to you. I think that email, it's M. Data, the start at the top of the email. Maybe a shorter number of pages because it was a response to emails that Mr. Golia had started. And then those were just delivered straight to me. I asked some questions in these emails and I responded with some answers. So this email came in at seven thirty-six AM this morning. Thank you for responding, Maureen, you're very helpful. Would you be able to shed some light about undeveloped lots? Who's at fault for empty purchase lots, et cetera? So that doesn't speak to the planning. Facts are, it hurts the neighborhood, the nature. All the trees were cut for nothing. And here we are planting street trees. It just, the undeveloped lots decreased the value of the neighborhood by about one million dollar investment per lot. Could decrease the town revenue, lot versus building taxes. No upkeep over green bushes. In some instances, obstruct the visibility while driving. If it's never been the plan to allow buy and not develop, has it? It cannot be a neighborhood without neighbors. It cannot be a neighbor's fault who bought and developed their lots, can it be? What can be done about it? So, you know, the response there is that the town does not have the important authority to compel an individual lot owner to build out the improvements on the lot. And vacant parcels are allowed to remain in their natural state. They don't have to be developed. But I'm actually looking for where they told me they agreed with Mr. Golia. And I believe it's in here somewhere, it may not be in this thread. There were so many threads that came in from various people. I'm sorry, I'm not organized enough to have separated them out. Golia again. It may be in the package from
Okay.
Ashley put together. Then we have that, that one you just read was from Carolyn Manchester, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was the one you just read. I had Anne, now who spoke. So those were the ones I wrote down and I'm on the square of, as of this afternoon. I do know that, believe those, all those names coincide with those that our town manager had also had communication with. I believe Tom is, goes with Anne? Yeah, so he was, Tom was, is the same household as Anne.
Okay.
And he was another one that was in communication with town manager with regard to this.
Okay. Well, come on, this is your, your time.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Giving us the chance to speak. I'm at ninety-eight Brittany's Path, and we've been there since twenty-one, so about almost three to four years. We love the community. My name is Amit Patel. Yes, so it's just been like unreal, you know, like ever since we've been there, every single day and night, we enjoy our lives. And this is getting these trees up. If it were like small enough or if we had a say into something, then we would have been much happier. But it's going to be like fifty, sixty, seventy feet in a few years. That will block the whole view, as my colleague said, you know. If we had those trees, if I have a chance, maybe I can put like, instead of four, put like ten in my backyard. I'm fine with that, there is no issue with that. But it's just that it's blocking the whole view, everything. And it's going to damage the utilities and everything in few years. So please, you know, consider everything and give us a chance to see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Tim, did you want to? I know you're
I just want, I just want clarify some stuff. Homeowners may not know the process that the commission goes through. This group of subdivision. Okay, it's a long process. If you look, there is minutes of every meeting they had. Many, of many meetings and many, many discussions on street trees, grades, grade of the road. They wanted a ten percent grade, no, we want a nine percent grade. Sidewalks. Everything was discussed and approvals were made. That, that the roads grades got to be nine percent. The drainage has to be proper. The, the, everything has to be put in place, the sidewalks, the developer's responsibility. One of those things is developer's responsibility with the street trees, then. Okay? It is behind the right of way of the street. The street is so wide and then there's a right of way. The trees are behind that, but it's in your yard. Where
No, no.
No.
It's a right, wait, wait, they're in the right
Right of way, but utilities, the utilities, the, the trees and everything else have their placement in that right of way. Everything is planned out totally. There's a bond, there's a bond placed on it. Okay, the developer placed a total bond of one million eighty-six thousand dollars on the property to do these improvements. One of it is street trees. Three hundred dollars each, thirty-six trees. Okay, which, which is in there. It's also, that's part of the approval of the subdivision, all laid out. When you buy a lot, your attorneys should be doing a, a, a search of the property, of the deed on the property and any restrictions that are on the property or of the subdivision. Okay? So if you weren't notified about trees or anything else like that, it should have been notified at your closing. So that approval of the subdivision, the new subdivision, that approval should have been in your packet and the deed and your lot lines and your pins in the lots got to be all pinned in. And, and we have
Conservation
conservation easements, whatever's on the property. It also said in, in the approvals, that where it was wooded, any substantial trees would be marked and shown on the map. Okay? Not clear cutted. Okay, and the street trees should be planted. All those are named in, in, in your, in the subdivision approval. If it's not completed, it's between the whoever did the subdivision and the town before they get approvals. They just want the street accepted, they want everything accepted, they do. They have to come to the town and say, okay, I completed everything that was required. Street trees, everything else. Okay? Street trees does not mean it's a fifty, thirty, fifty-foot high tree. You go down Farmington Avenue and a good example of street trees is all the way down Farmington Avenue. Okay? They may go up twenty, thirty feet at the most. Okay, they're street trees all the way down. The type of tree is named out on, on the regulations. The trees should be at least two and a half inches round when they're planted. The type of trees, everything is named out. So if there's any thing that's not done or completed, it's not on the town. It's on the developer. Okay? The town has a bond if the developer doesn't do it to complete. Probably this, this bond, million-dollar bond is not enough to complete it now because over the years, things cost more and everything else. It may be, it may be enough. But that's where your, your responsibilities lie, is first with the developer. And then with attorney that does the title search. And then the title search should be these, these subdivision plans of saying where these trees are going to be and what they're going to happen. Everything is spelt out. So when you come to this commission, it's not the commission, well, someone's been on the, on the commission when that was approved in two thousand eighteen. I know at least two, three, three of you that's been on the commission in two thousand eighteen. Okay? The subdivision plans say that things should be done in five years. There is extensions could, that could be had, okay? But things should be mostly completed in five years. If you need extension to plant trees or whatever, the town usually, we usually say, okay, you know, we give you another year to, to, to complete the project. But you know, you should have known about anything on your property because it was spelt out in the subdivision plan and on your deed. It should have been on your deed. Okay? So you should have known everything that was on your property. And if you want to know everything that's on the property, I have everything right here. I got, I got, I got the approval sitting in my hand here. You know, yes, probably communication problem there. Okay, between developer. I know there was a death of the developer, but whoever inherits or takes over the development or a contractor takes care of, is hired to do the, the development. Okay? That's who needs to be talked to and say, okay, we want our development completed. We want our, our, our pavement. We want everything done. Okay? I mean, you came here not too long ago to us about the island and the street. Okay? We said, okay. Okay? Because that wasn't a major thing. Okay, but it's been on this one development, one thing after another. So I don't know where you, where, you know, you could say the town didn't do their job because the town doesn't have the responsibility. They only got the responsibility to go out and inspect what's been done. When it's time to inspect the property. And, and if it's not done, they'll say, you got to complete this. You got to do this, whatever, you got to meet the, meet the approvals. Okay, that's, that hasn't happened. So I think we're one step ahead of the cart right here of, of, of doing this stuff, you know? And if you want a bunch of stuff done, then there's a different process than, than here, okay? And I'm sure the town could recommend you on that. But as far as I'm concerned, it's too far, too, too forward in the thing.
Okay, but, okay, can you please use the microphone? Her point of clarification
Name again.
Anne Pino, one eleven Brittany's Path. You just read the bond, thirty-six trees. How do we get seventy-two trees? And we're told that Maureen and Steve McClarty met and decided this.
Okay, I think that the probably staff has something that they wish
On it at thirty-six.
In regard to that, I, I can't address that. So we went to the regulations, not realizing if I dug into the minutes. The minutes said two trees. The two
Two trees.
is in conflict with the regulations. The subdivision regulations call for large trees at thirty-five feet and smaller trees at twenty or twenty-five feet, you know, at lesser, at a lesser distance apart. And we went to the regulation instead of knowing that there was this nuance in the approval at that time when they came in. Now, that is something that typically the developer would go, no, no, we only have to do two because they only want to spend the money on the two. It was this week pulling bonds, pulling all the other information together, including the minutes, that I saw that there was a conflict. Now, the two trees was in lieu of saving mature trees on the property. So my initial read of it was a minimum of two anyway. I read it as minimum of two because the regulations call for one every thirty-five. Once I went back and listened to the audio tape, we did not have hybrid meetings back then. So we had to pull the MP three files. And I listened to it and I thought, you know, the commission really needs to tell me, were they talking? Two trees per lot was all that was going to end up, if it's required, that you waived the, the distance of the thirty-five feet? Or was it two, at least two, need to stay there without that wording being in there? I wasn't the planner, you know, that wrote up that, that approval. Might have been at the meeting, might not have been at the meeting, you know, I, I wasn't the principal planner at the time. So it didn't stick. So that was, that's where the conflict between the regulations saying one every thirty-five feet for the larger sized trees and fifteen. And we did point out to them that they needed to be fifteen feet from the property corners according to that regulation and a couple of other things within the regulation. And he did modify the plan to show that. And that's the plan that was distributed to you, showing all those trees. Again, that same conversation was the waving of the trees along the open space area. And that's why they're not shown there on the west side of the street. And adjacent to where Mr. Demko had put the, his hedge. However, those trees did end up planted, so he mustn't have objected.
Yeah. What, what does the town recommend when the developer does not respond to repeated phone calls and attempts at conversation over two to four years until very recently? And her attorney does not respond?
It would be a civil matter. You need to contact your attorney to take action against the, that would be the town's advice. We just don't have that authority.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority to intervene. We don't have the authority to intervene in, you know, that's your contractual issue, a private.
Private business dealing. Yeah. So, so, um, Steve, Steve is on, you said? And do you want to find out if Steve would like to speak?
I declined being, um, declined being a participant, a panelist. Um, while we have the moment, I did just allow him to speak if he allowed him if, if he's listening and wants to. Can I just also, because we did find this and Mr. Golia asked about it. Um, I, we do have the email from Justin and Suzie Denny. They did not provide their address on this, but they also provided correspondence that says, hi, Ashley, I'm aligned with the views of my fellow neighbors at Brittany's Path. Unfortunately, my wife Suzie and I are not going to be available for the meeting, Justin Denny. So just for the record, wanted you to know that that was also.
And I think, um,
And I also, um, to help the commission, maybe understand, maybe understand, maybe not. Um, I did make copies of some photographs I took of the street trees. In some of these photos, they're pretty hard to see because they are, you know, fairly small size-wise, um, planted, but so you could see the planting. So each packet is separate. We have a client sharing.
No problem.
Photographs are.
And I think Diane. Yeah, I think Diane wanted to say something.
Yeah.
Diane.
Thank you.
Jersey.
Um, so in preparation for tonight's meeting, I read through the packet that was pulled together by um, staff, which includes the minutes for the public hearing that was held when we were considering the subdivision. I also, um, viewed aerial mapping, um, online today to see what the subdivision looks like. Because, um, it's obvious based on the minutes of, um, the, the meeting, the minutes of the public hearing, that there was a lot of discussion about trees in the subdivision. And there were promises made by the developer um, and the developer's partner, which I believe is Mr. Demko. Promising that, uh, trees were going to be preserved whenever possible during the development of the site. The site was going to be left as natural as we can, quote unquote. The engineer said that trees will be preserved and taken lot by lot during the permitting process. Um, our town planner stated in the minutes that each lot will have two trees, whether by preservation or planting, conditioned upon development of each lot. Uh, Mr. Demko sta- stated that he will oversee the building of the houses. With regard to trees, there will be a twenty-foot buffer in between each property, which will remain untouched. The intention is to keep things as natural as possible. Um, there were seven hundred fifty mature trees on the site. Um, and each house permit will address the tree issue. So there is significant discussion in the meeting minutes about preserving trees, the trees that were going to be part of the subdivision. Commissioner Zigmund is right. You all should have known. You all should have known.
Well, you have to use the microphone. I think the gentleman behind you wanted.
I'm, I, Matthew Golia, I, I respectfully disagree. Based on what you just read there, I have no clue what's happening because it, it's telling me that there's trees that are going to be preserved. I, I don't, I don't know when the, when, when there was a communication. Obviously, trees weren't preserved, but there was, I don't know where the documentation was there. You read there clearly didn't say minimum of two trees. It says two trees per lot, not minimum or maximum. So when you say that it's straightforward, reading in the guidelines, I, I, I see straightforward when I read subdivision guidelines. I don't read straightforward when it starts with a, um, uh, one of the documentation we have stating that, um, in lieu of planting street trees, we will attempt to preserve trees. That's written somewhere. And then there's a change that there's now, all the trees were cut down, so now we need to plant. So I don't know how, without like diligent research, it could be clear what the intent was. And, 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 and what, what, like what takes precedence? The two trees on the bond, the two trees that were stated in those minutes, the fact that they were going to preserve street, preserve trees, so it's not the need street trees. There's no clarity. So I would say the opposite. We, 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 we are unsure of, 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 of what the intent was or what actually took place. So I just wanted to state that it doesn't seem clear to me. It seems the opposite of clear to me as to what should have take place or what had to happen or what the obligation was.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. McClarity did raise his hand.
Okay.
Mr. McClarity, uh, would you like to, to speak, sir?
Well, I just want to say, I don't know what I can do, being the contractor up there trying to make everybody happy, but, um, I'm willing to talk or willing to answer any questions, but I do say, I'm pretty happy that the planning commission takes this stance and wants to plant trees throughout areas that do get disturbed in the town of Berlin for new developments. So it'd be pretty hard to say one person gets to choose and one person doesn't get to choose. So I think they do a pretty good job of trying to make rules that fit all. And, and I don't know how you can avoid this. Um, so I, I kind of think that, uh, the commission does a nice job. If you look what's going on in Farmington Avenue, there's buildings going up there and there's trees going up. And those trees someday will grow to be pretty nice looking trees around those buildings. Is that to say that he can say he doesn't want trees? I mean, where does this go, you know? So I just thinks, I, I don't know if you guys can win, you know?
There were, there, there were a couple of specific concerns, um, mentioned though with regard to the placement of the trees. Um, trees being placed and, and, uh, you know, I, I know you've been dealing with Mr. Horrible principally on site. Um, and by the way, this is, this is Attorney Kapola. I'm counsel to the, I'm just, I'm trying to assist in terms of guidance of sort of where are we going from here? So there, there were some specific concerns about, um, where the saplings got placed, um, being placed alongside, um, some trees that had already been installed, um, by the lot owners. Um, also the concern expressed about interference, uh, with utility facilities. Um, our, our firm, my, our firm has represented and, and the commission knows this, but S N E T for, um, all of its years, um, and then some, uh, in, in, uh, Attorney DeNofrio and Attorney Seola's prior firm. Um, so I, I'm just curious, have you received any communications from any utilities about the placement of these trees? Because the lot owners are indicating, uh, that they've caught, the utilities are, well, I would think it's called before you dig. Um, but, uh, that they've been out again, um, and expressed some concern. Have they contacted you? Because you would be their primary point of contact, right?
Yes, they would be. Um, no one has contacted me from call before you dig. And if you got to think about this, utilities run along a lot of streets, rural streets, town streets in the suburbs, but rural streets. Trees are planted nonchalantly a lot, you know, seeds fall out of the, out of the tree adjacent and grow a tree and nobody's worried about utilities. And so all the power lines are in conduit. You have a copper water line that won't be affected. And you have a PVC sewer line that's pretty deep, like extremely deep. So PVC isn't really, uh, affected by sewer line or by trees either. So I'm kind of finding that a little bit of a stretch for myself. There's a lot of utilities planted in around trees. And there is a narrow, I think the town owns a sixty-foot path, twenty-eight-foot wide road that leaves sixteen feet for utility easements, sidewalks and street trees. And you're going to get a sewer line that runs perpendicular to the road and you're liable to get a tree somewhere near that, whether they plant it or it happens to be one of these town trees, right? So, um, I, I think that's kind of a, a difficult, uh, stance to take that it doesn't hold a lot of water. I don't think so. There's a lot of trees.
Curious if there was a concern, you know, I, I, yeah, just wondering if they did contact you because you are the point.
No.
Not because you're the one who would have called them out there to begin with.
No, no.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that information. Thanks. Just so that they know.
Very good. Uh, other commissioners with comments or questions? All right, so. Yeah, just.
Well, work for Vera again, um, if Ray put in covenants for us to not be able to put trees on our property over forty feet because I'm guessing he didn't want to block the view. Why would we put the biggest trees possible on our front yards? Why would Ray want that? He didn't want us in the covenances to have trees over a certain size. Why would you go plant thirty-six, now seventy-two, larger trees that are going to be over forty feet in all of our front yards? Makes no sense.
I can't answer that question. I don't think the commission could answer that question. However, Diane.
So the street trees have to be selected from a list, a specific list of species.
Okay, sir.
Hi, my name's Tom Zolad. I'm, uh, man's husband of one eleven. One eleven Brittany's path. I just wanted to say that I have a part of the copy from the, uh, from the, uh, website and, and from the town. And, uh, they do say large trees, medium sized, small trees. Species of trees that were planted were all from the large size, which meant they would be very large. I know we talked about planting them thirty-five feet or planting them closer if they're small, but they were all large trees by the town's own, uh, designation. And the thing that I, that I saw is I, I copied this and I gave it to the surveyor. I gave it to the tree, uh, planters. They had never seen any guidelines from the town about whether it should be fifteen feet from the corner, whether it should be thirty-five feet from the intersection. They were given no instructions on, on how to map this out and what were the restrictions that the town had put in. The town also says on, on number H on that, on page twenty-three, all species shall be, all species and planting locations should be listed and shown on the site plan. I, I don't know if, we never saw a site plan. I have some of the proposals and I have some of the approved site plan. There's no trees anywhere. Maybe there's other sheets. I'm, I'm looking at sheet forty-three, sixty-five, forty-three, eighty-five. Um, maybe there are other sheets that show that from a different, from the rest of the packet that was approved. We never saw any trees put on any of our, uh, any of our lots when we bought these properties. So I, maybe they're there somewhere, but and the other, the other problem I sent, I, I spoke to one of the builders this week about what happened to the trees. And he said, in order to place the basements, almost every lot had to be blasted. When they blasted every lot, most of the trees had, had to go. They couldn't be preserved. So that's the reason why they weren't clear cut by the, by the developer. They had to be, they were sacrificed due to the blasting that had to be done. If, if any of you have been there, it's a side of a hill and it's solid rock. And, uh, even, even to place the monument, they had the, on my lot, they had to jackhammer it through this rock. So it's a, it's a, it's a difficult place, uh, you know, to try to preserve trees. I know they tried to do that, but it was difficult for them to do that. Yeah. So, uh, I just think it was just a bit of a lack of communication that, that they, that the people who were doing the work didn't even know what the guidelines of the town planning commission were. So, um, that's all I have to say.
For me.
Yeah.
Just a bit of miscommunication for a long time.
It was not, we did not also find that there was a planting plan um, laid out with the planting on it. But there was a note on one of the pages. I'm, I want to say it was page seven, but I could be wrong. It was, you know, it's quite a big, actually I could probably find it. But there is a note on the plan in the plan set about the plantings, the place two per lot.
Okay.
And that's in the.
And Jennifer, did you have something you wanted to add or can I move on?
Typically what happens and, and Mr. McClarity can, can speak to this as well. I mean, you know, typically what is supposed to happen is, is, is that, uh, whoever is overseeing the project is going to have that drawing in the field, you know, provided whether it's by the, you know, project engineer. Your, it just, it just depends. I mean, they would have a planting plan in the field with them when they're going to do the work. I mean, that's, you know, what, what.
That's commonplace.
And I've been on. I do. Unfortunately, sometimes I'm actually asked to do visits and.
There you go.
Right. So, and I know that Maureen knows what I'm saying as well.
I will note for the record that then during these discussions of where these street trees were going to go, the engineers, engineer informed that, um, developed the site plan did draw out the planting plan. And then made a revision when they realized they had the plant, the trees closer than fifteen feet. You know, that that was a regulation and had to be reminded of that regulation, but they are, um, familiar with the, um. Steve, could you mute yourself?
Or did he want to talk?
Oh, you want to say something else?
Mr. McClarity, did you want to add anything?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
So that's this plan that you got with the green and orange on it. Didn't we give you the, 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 it's only partial plan, it's not a plan sheet. Um, I put the what each marking means.
And we asked Stephen if, if there is a completion time on this project yet.
Yep. Well, let's see. Mr. McClarity, we have a question from one of the commissioners.
Yep.
Commissioner Sigma.
Yes, uh, now that, uh, we know you're, you're the one that everyone would come to, uh, is there a plan of completion for this project now? I mean, the completion is normally five years, but I know the extension time. But is there a time span now?
Yeah, Fran, Fran is looking to finish this job. It was just recently, the surface course was paved, the sidewalks are in, the property markers are done. Street trees are planted. I do believe there's a few more monuments that have to go in, uh, mostly conservation monuments. And, um, but that's primarily it. And then after this, it will be a series of, uh, of, um, just documentation to, uh, uh, release the load between, release the road between, uh, Mr. Pentor and the town. Jim Cassidy, the surveyor. And that should be it. Everything will be done prior before winter hits. So that's been the goal.
Would you, would you address the trees that are, uh, bigger than the regular street trees, uh, that were planted?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that question?
Uh, well, we just had testimony that there was, uh, trees planted that will grow forty, fifty feet up in the air. Uh, and street trees don't usually grow that tall. So I'm just wondering if that will be addressed.
The trees that were planted were on the list and they were two and a half inch caliber.
Okay, so they, there are the type of trees that were on the list that are planted. But the, someone, someone said that a builder on, on these property, uh, planted trees that would grow fifty feet in height. So I'm just wondering if that will be addressed.
They're in the category of large trees, large, medium and small. They're in the category.
As long as they're in the, in the regulation size, as long as they're in the regulation size of them.
Anne Peanu, one eleven Brittany's path. I looked up every variety of tree that was planted. They do grow to forty to fifty feet. Every variety that was planted.
Okay.
They are on the list, but they are larger than typical street trees.
I'm not a tree official, official, so I can't, I can't tell you.
So I did redact that from the, because it would have. So I did redact that from the, because it would have made this report another page long. So I did take out the list of trees um, from your staff report.
No problem. I've ju, I've just.
Trying to pull it up now.
Sense from trees, uh, well, when our family.
I'll just, um, quick comment. Uh, so I mean, I look at what's going on right now and I mean, after a quick revision of the minutes um, from the other commissioners, there was a reason that these street, these trees were put in place. Um, it's not like we don't do waivers on projects. Um, if we get good reasons that, you know, we can justify. But as my hard part with this is that um, you are not the developer coming to us. And generally when we're dealing with an HOA, there's an elected official from the HOA who comes to present saying, this is what the HOA would like. I'm an elected official. So I just don't know if um, this, you individual homeowners have the, if we have the authority to deal with this site plan just because a few of the people who bought lots there and built their homes, as I know that's hard because you did put big investments in them. Um, I don't know if you guys have the authority to make this request in my, in my view.
So the, so the one thing and, and you know, the uh, Mrs. Dick Decormier was contacted uh, by the town manager. Um, we do have a voicemail from her. Um, you, you know, indicating that she had no objection to it's. Well, I don't know exactly that she used the word, the phrase no objection, but that she was aware of the meeting and that it was gonna take place and, and express sort of no concern with the fact that, you know, they were gonna make the request. Um, I do, I, but y- your point kinda goes back to my point at the beginning that I'm, I'm somewhat concerned, uh, I, I feel like perhaps some sort of correspondence needs to issue to all the lot owners to say, you know, uh, that the commission may be deciding uh, to, to alter, you know, the street tree planting plan here. Um, and you know, this is your chance to come forward and, and address the commission. Um, I, you know, that's, again, I have no idea if uh, the list of emails that um, were contained in, you know, uh, uh, in Mr. Golia's uh, correspondence, whether that includes all interested parties or not. I, I, I do agree with you. I mean, I think that that's.
That's actually more of my concern. What if something was, was that they're away, if something was spelled wrong, you know, that's.
So um, you know, which is why, you know, I started this with saying, well, all subdivisions are, you know, by law, there are public hearings and this is a modification where you're asking to waive uh, something that's pretty substantial. No doubt, right? So um, your next meeting, uh, your, your next regular meeting is this, is that a regular meeting, special meeting?
It's regular meeting is next Thursday, so it'd be noticed as a public hearing in time for that. It's a December eleventh meeting.
If the commission wants to take it.
Well, this, well, this is.
What we have to decide.
If you wanna take it, cause there's, you know, you've heard a lot of different reasons why this request is in place. Some, some because uh, you know, people have already done landscaping. You, you hea, heard a very impassioned plea about views. Um, and uh, I know that's very meaningful as well to this commission, so, you know. Um, and if it's the type of thing where you feel like too, you need to go and you need to take a look at this point um, at what's going on out there in person, um, I, you know, am sure that nobody would have any objection to that.
My, um, my input, and again, I defer to counsel, of course, on this, but from what I read of the approval and listened to, et cetera, that the discretion of evaluating existing trees, and I guess that this point it would include existing landscaping that's been done by the individual property owners. Um, it sounds to me like in the approval in twenty eighteen, the built-in was evaluating on a lot by lot basis. The um, the existence of trees and then the placement of street trees. So um, I'm not sure that I would say that a public hearing is necessarily necessary. I suppose, and of course, it's always your discretion anyhow, but that that's kind of built in and then um, but would suggest that if that was case, that you handled the pleas by the individual owners and again, notify the entire neighborhood, entire street, all the property owners that this, clearly they did not understand that they should have come in or the builder or their, you know, the person that developed the lot initially, um, should have come in with what they had on the lot and what their intent was for trees, but that they could have that right to come in at this point, in the interest of of um, open, open public dialogue.
Even, even if we don't go to a, a special meeting, uh, uh, each property owner should be notified properly, a certified mail receipt requested. I don't know if that can go through the HOA or whatever, but each property owner should be notified of anything happening in the subdivision. Uh, and it can be notified, registered mail and receipt requested. And then all the receipts come back with them and they can present, every property owner knows.
We actually use certificate of mailing now to show that we mailed it, but not that they signed for it and took it.
But I don't think that's the town's responsibility.
But the, but the HOA, I think, could do it.
It would be certified, so the certificate.
Because this is a subdivision that we've already, we've dealt with since two thousand and eighteen. And so it's, it's right down to the last lead and the last portion is when the street trees always go in. So, the streets, they're always last to go in. And I looked at the pictures here and I could see why they're looking for street trees because the developers, um, and we deal with different developers here in town, but I think it's safe to say it's easier for them to knock and tear everything down and out and just to level a lot, then they dig their foundation and worry about the sins we committed. And that's what we, we find. And so what happens is you get this progress where it goes to street trees. Because it's like, okay, you took it out, now you gotta put it back in. And that's why we have the street trees here, because there was a lot of good funding there. And that excavation and, you know, whatever, but I, I hesitate to go to any kind of public forum. I mean, this obviously is the commission, it's up to the commission what to do on just one vote. But my consensus is that we, we generally have heavy schedules anyway, which. Well, we also have and decisions, finally come to contract with the developer are binding and we expect them to be built. We have a bond in, like, you know, so, so, there is all of this venue. Where the town would have to, um, all those whatever, but we also had clarity on, on buying and being paid fulfill the contract. So, I mean, it's, it's really kind of a mishmash. I defer not to get it turned on, well, putting that as far as. I, I'm not sure with the venue. Number one, should we go to a public area?
Yeah, I see this as a simple pattern. Um, without there, I was saying, as the developer, I wanted to think. Agent, I reply for having to settle, state away, president. Um, or any development, uh, I don't, appearing, I, I, that is, encouraged. Say, I mean, or watch your lawyers and get that HOA dealt with.
Okay, alright. Mr. McLarty, anyone in the dust, alright, so we're not.
I, I assume that the commission is fine with me speaking to Mr. Pintor?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's again, from the outside, you know, it looks, cause the annual reports have been filed, so a little, yeah.
So, I, I have a question for clarity for staffing standpoint as far as our, the work for us to do. So, um, you're, is it that the commission is wanting the street trees to stay as planted and remain? Or that the on, the, that once the authority is established of, say, the homeowners talking to the, the developer, um, and they ask to waive the placement of a tree or two. Um, there's one in particular that is planted pretty close to uh, um, evergreen. I don't know my varieties of trees like some of you do, but it's pretty close to that. And I thought, well, those are close together. Um, I don't know if they're too close together or not. I'm not a tree person, but you know, they're fairly close together, could, you know, the removal of trees where there are other trees in close proximity. Um, is that something that the staff could, could do as was in the, as was anticipated in the twenty eighteen approval that existing trees would be considered? Um, if not, that's fine. I just need the clarity so I know what we, our office has authority to do or not. The, the written request of, of specific trees.
You feel as if you don't have enough information about the placement of what's there and, okay.
Cause it almost seems like. There's not the same issue on voting.
Next meeting or more likely December meeting, cause the next meeting's only next week. Or an upcoming meeting, an upcoming meeting when, at the time that it's appropriate. Okay, thank you for that. So, just for the record, I did pu, share on the screen, the street trees, the small trees are on the next, but those are all listed under street trees. So large trees, medium trees, and then the next speaks, speaks to smaller trees. Is there? So that's just to answer the question earlier. Rest of what you got printed.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. Since small trees are considered street trees, um, does anything prohibit the homeowners going to the person fulfilling the development and negotiating, say, hey, can we put a smaller street tree in and place up the tall ones that were installed? Because of all the trees we've already planted?
They're already, most of, most if not all are planted. I think I saw a couple people, a couple being planted today when I was out. End time of year. He's under a, a time constraint with regard to when it's still reasonable out to plant trees. You just can't hear, I'm sorry. And it's gotta be. Thank you. I didn't mean to just point.
Work for there again. Who's responsible once the bonds lifted for the trees? The trees that we didn't put in.
They're on the town property.
I know, but who's responsible for them? Are we responsible for the tree or is the town responsible for the tree? When the trees get put in, the bond gets lifted, who's responsible for the trees? Oh, so next spring when the bond's lifted and the trees are in everybody's front yard, who's responsible for the trees?
So.
Who's responsible for the trees?
Generally speaking, you come to the town if you want to um, trim or not, but otherwise then the town does.
So the, the lots, half the lots that are not developed right now, builder comes in, rips down the trees, puts up the lot, then what happens? Who's responsible for putting his trees in?
Those trees, all the lots have.
If you're gonna build on lot two.
Are on.
There's eight, there's eight trees on lot two. If you're gonna build, some of those trees have to come down. You have to make driveways. You can't like, you're not gonna work around eight trees.
So they, they'd show us that on their site plan.
Then they, they out of their pocket, the trees back in?
No, if they, I mean, if the trees in the location of the driveway, just like on any other lot, if it's, it wouldn't have fit there. It would have been moved over, or there wouldn't be one in that location in order to get the right number of trees at the right distance.
Then why wouldn't they have done that in the beginning and then left our trees where our trees were that they wanted? Because they're still marked trees, on, on my property, that still have the markings on them between me and on it. That, right, like, I was the fourth house being built up there and every single marked tree that was up there when I went up there is still marked. They're still got.
You, you preserved trees on your lot that were existing trees prior to development?
Tape on them and they were known not to be touched. So I, and I was the fourth house.
So yours was, was one of the lots that would have saved trees.
They're not in the front yard.
But no one came to, to the town to ask that those, and again, they obviously didn't save any trees in the front yard, which was, it sounds like the intent of the twenty eighteen.
And developments that were built, like, let's go to Still Meadow, where Still Meadow was put in, everybody got two trees in their front yard, dirt, twenty, twenty-five foot trees. They've since been weather, weather broken, ripped out. New boat, homeowners come in, don't know the rules, cut the trees down, have grass. So now you have those developments. Some people have trees, some people have two, some people have one, some people have none. Why do trees not have to go back into those spots? Like, is there a timeline? I'm just trying to understand how this happens once the town takes, like, once the bond's lifted. Like, if the tree, a snowplow knocks over a tree, who's responsible for that tree in the spring?
The town doesn't go out and inspecting the trees, you know, every year and see if they're, they're living or anything else. Uh, the only way the town would know if someone complains that their street trees aren't there, someone cut them down. Uh, you know, next door neighbor, whatever, and actions would be taken or, or the homeowner would be addressed of those trees that aren't town property. But uh, you know, there is no way to say those trees got taken down. The town doesn't know about it, you know, because they don't know, they're inspecting every day.
By me, there are other situations where um, the town tree warden may go out because the tree, a tree is not um, viable any longer or, or is causing a hazard or public works has a problem, the, the tree is causing a hazard. And those could come down over time. Now, those are generally after they are quite mature and the development is well established and you do have more trees throughout. There's currently, um, uh, the historic district, for instance, is looking into how to get funds to replace street trees that over, you know, this, we're in a historic, the historic district is hundreds of years old with street trees that deteriorate over time and, and looking to fund a way to reestablish the street canopy. So, that is an overturning kind of issue.
Yeah. Would the homeowners association not have an obligation? Would the homeowners association not have an obligation for maintenance of those trees?
I don't believe so, but I don't know for sure. It hasn't been a subject that has come up much.
Yeah, and I, I would have to read the papers in their entirety. I mean, I, I've not gone through everything. I would look at the file and see what the obligations are. And also, you may have an ordinance, a related ordinance, I would have to look at that. You know, I know, you know, I have some experience with street trees in commercial areas. I mean, trees don't, do not last forever, unfortunately, especially when they are along the street, because we know, you know, that, that traffic lights affect them and there's the salt and sand and, and the dicer that gets, puts on the road. So, yeah, so, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look through everything.
I don't think the subdivision regulations have a time.
No.
On street trees.
No, because what's contemplated is that the initial planting is taken care of. Yeah. And typically, they last decades.
Thank you.